I call to order the Vermillion Local School District Board of Education Regular Meeting, Wednesday, October 12th, 2022. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There's time for public participation during the meeting as indicated on the agenda. Call the order, please.
Mr. Johnston.
Here.
Mr. Habermill.
Here.
Mrs. Russell.
Here.
Mrs. Step.
Here.
Mrs. Innis.
Here.
All members present?
Okay, item three, tonight we have some special guests in attendance. We have some citizens of the month from... They're doing that specific... We have the citizen of the month from DES here tonight to do the pledge of allegiance. So if I can have them come up front, they will introduce themselves and then we will do the pledges allegiance with them. Can I go over here with the mics, let them introduce themselves?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hey, how about we flip them around?
So the camera, yeah.
Face the camera.
Face that way.
I am Kate Russell and I'm in third grade.
My name is Jase Russell and I am in kindergarten.
My name is Emery Glawaki and I'm in second grade.
My name is Kaylee and I'm in second grade.
My name is Charlotte Stanley and I'm in first grade.
My name is Kirsten and I'm in third grade.
My name is Charlotte Hyster and I'm in second.
I'm Stevie and I'm in kindergarten.
My name is Sophia Hayes and I'm in second grade.
My name is Elliot and I'm in second grade.
My name is Anthony and I'm in kindergarten.
So first off, before we do the pledge, guys, I'd like to thank you for being great citizens of our schools and good role models. So if you'd like to, we're going to turn towards the flag and help you say the pledge today, okay? Ready? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Great, I thank you parents too very much. Thank you.
No, that would be a little creepy. Crystal starts kissing all the kids. Should I make the announcement? Those two are lying.
Yeah.
We kind of tried. We did.
They would get up before it throughout the couple of weeks and it was pretty cool.
Can't imagine why.
All right, moving on to the student liaison report.
Okay, today for our student liaison report, we have Hannah Powinski and Natalie Kovac. Here, they are going to come up and talk about a program we have called Set Sail. Yeah, Jen, this is Bangold. Thank you.
Good evening. Before Hannah and Natalie come in, come up here and share their experience, just to give you a background of the VHS Set Sail program, it is a senior project. It can be career-based or a passion project that benefits the community. So this is only our second year into doing this, but what this provides students is the opportunity to earn credits, kind of exploring, you know, their potential work interests prior to going off to college and exploring their work interests and giving them an opportunity to benefit the community. So with that, Hannah, you want to come up first?
My name is Hannah Powinski and I am a senior here currently at VHS. Right now, I'm spending time at the Cleveland Clinic in Lorraine. Right now, I'm in primary care and I am job shadowing medical assistants and nurses. My day usually consists of observing visits with watching AKGs, taking blood pressure, et cetera. But there's also a part that is not the so glamorous part, which is a lot of sitting at computers, charting, and listening to phone calls. They have this really cool thing there where doctors and nurses can be on phone calls and I can put on a headset to just listen and not talk. It's really nice just to like hear, you know, what they're talking about, what they're discussing. I normally go every day during school, so I have taken out my fourth period through sixth period just to spend time there and go there. Everybody there is super nice. It's a very tight group of people and they're very welcoming and they're very happy to have students there to observe. This experience has let me see if I really want to be in the medical field or not. Both of my parents are in the medical field, so without the Set Sail program, I don't think I would have been able to see and observe what I really want to do in the future. Thank you.
My name's Natalie Kovac and I'm also a senior here at VHS and I am a part of the Set Sail program with Ms. Nail, the school counselor at the elementary school. I wanted to start by thanking Mr. Malier, Mrs. Redman, and Ms. Nail for allowing me to spend my time there and work with your students. At the beginning of the year, Ms. Nail took the time to teach me about the role of the school counselor and like what her days look like all the time. She taught me about the ASCA National Model Book and how she typically manages her time with the students and confidentiality and stuff like that. In September, we started to plan her classroom lessons that she does once a month. Since it was the first one of the year, the lesson was to teach the students about the role of the school counselor and like how she can help them. We did this by, for the kindergarten classes, she used Mrs. Potato Head and her body parts to like, like how she can use her feet to walk around the school and say hi to everyone. And then for grades first, second, and third, we played bingo to review since they had already done the Mrs. Potato Head. And then in October, since it's National Bullying Prevention Month, we focused on, focused the classroom lessons by teaching students the importance of being a buddy and not a bully and standing up for one another and themselves. Today, we did a classroom lesson and the activity was called Wrinkle, or wrinkled heart. It was called the wrinkled heart to show students that their actions and words are really powerful and that it's important to be kind. We're celebrating Unity Day next week and everyone's encouraged to wear orange to promote kindness and inclusion. We're also going to be planning Red Ribbon Week to promote health choices in the last week of October. And then for my final project, we're going to be, I'm going to be taking on a leadership role by helping to prepare for Random Acts of Kindness Week and that is going to take place in February. And we have had, we have lots of ideas up our sleeves to prevent, spread kindness at VHS and the community. Thank you.
Participation on agenda items only. Each participant has three minutes to speak and a lot of time of thirty minutes. So this is on agenda items only. Item seven is the safety and security grant presentation by Assistant Superintendent.
I learned about the Set Sail program when I came up here for graduation in the spring before even worked here and I love everything about it. These kinds of mentorship programs for kids that are in high school that connect them with, you know, a career that they want to be in or something that they're passionate about. I just think about the amazing impact that that has in these students and it's a hard thing to work and to make grow to scale just because of the sheer number of things involved, but it's, it's an awesome program. It's, I'm glad they have it here, so it's fantastic. The, the points that I'm going to speak from are very brief and they're, they're in the packet in front of you, but we recently kind of had a lot of things going on in the area of safety and security, so thought it might be good for just a brief update. First, we applied for and turned in a week ago Friday, the school safety and security grant from the state of Ohio for the amount of $100,000 per school building. This is a two-year-old grant program. First, the state of Ohio, under Governor Dewine, created a $5 million pot of money to help school districts fund safety and security measures and equipment and things like that in 2021. This year, the state is using federal government ARP funding to fund $100 million worth of projects like this. So we, we created and completed a grant application that included the things that are listed there, some additions to and modifications to the door hardware and wiring that we have here, basically giving us the capability to do with any door what we can currently do with like the main entrance doors, electrically kind of unlock them and lock them or to, you know, make sure they're locked or unlocked just kind of electrically remotely and to have an indication if they're locked and unlocked. And that's, that is a lot of doors. I counted and a lot of other people were working with me on this week, counting the doors in the district and getting that kind of thing ready, but that's part of it. The next one is a lockdown alarm in a PA system. This is something that I'm familiar with and I've had before. There's a kind of elements of it here, like a panic alarm that allows the, allows the secretary to immediately push a button and without creating alert within the school, notify someone at the police department that we're in a lockdown situation or that we're, we're an active shooter type of situation. We're going to take that and work with a company that's building kind of enhancements that include better PA speakers for outside so that, you know, just another element of safety is the kids that are on the playground, kids that are on their way to the field house and back for PE class, and visitors that may be coming to the building to have the ability to notify them about what's going on inside, outside the building. That's, that's part of it. Also, a series of strobe lights and PAs, speakers around the building through which we can give information to everybody everywhere about what's going on in the event of an active shooter situation. It takes it a lot further than just the PA system that we have now, gives anybody administrators and teachers and any adult basically, the ability to put the building in lockdown from, from any location and use a, use a phone to kind of pack, give out information about what's going on and where. Communication and information is, is key in those kinds of situations. The third thing is an integrated enhanced 911 system. It's kind of a, it's kind of a new thing, but basically what it does is makes us compliant with what they call Ray-Bomb's Law, which was a law that had to do with the fact that 911 indications when they go to the dispatch center, you know, now have to come from a certain location within our buildings as opposed to just like from Vermillion. Kind of saw a simulation from the vendor that we, we talked to about this where they just kind of said, this is what a 911 dispatcher sees. And I think we were, we were all kind of shocked to see that it's not as specific as you would think and to get exact location information about 911 calls is difficult, but this is a system that gives us the ability to do that, plus some other things that tie together some of the existing security infrastructure we have and make it available to everyone from law enforcement to the dispatchers, to administrators, and things like that. So more information about that one for sure. The fourth one is security film for the windows. 3M and some other companies make a product that make it possible to put a film on the inside of a window that, it's not ballistic. You can shoot through it, but once you have done so, or if you don't try to do so, but just try to break it in, it makes it really, really hard to break and take a long time. There's, if you Google 3M security film, you'll see a YouTube video of exactly what it does. It's a great illustration of it. It's a, it's something that's, it's a recommendation from safety and security consultants in the state and the federal kind of language that we use to kind of set standards for schools and security now. The other one is door barricade devices. Two-thirds of our buildings, this building in the middle school have deadbolt locks on, on, on classroom doors and a lot of office doors that were installed several years ago for safety and security purposes. This kind of, these will make the elementary school and the rest of the offices compliant with that so that it's possible to make it a lot harder to get into any room, whether it's a classroom or an office, whatever it is. In addition to those things that were part of the grant, we've got some professional development and training that's ongoing. We've conducted a vulnerability assessment, which was our security and safety consultants came and basically tried to find anything that they could in our buildings, outside our buildings that were issues of safety and security. It's amazing, no matter how well you think you know a building and know a staff and know your procedures, you know, having somebody else walk in with a fresh set of eyes, really, really valuable and that we've, we've had that recently. We've got upcoming professional development in the three areas that are mentioned there. We're going to look at the vulnerability assessment and see what it is that it suggests we should do. We're going to train our after-hours personnel in safety and security, something that's very important to custodians that are here late into the evening or, you know, the eyes and ears of the building. And importantly, many, many times, no matter what the event is here, like take a board meeting, take anything from a basketball game to whatever, they're the school personnel that are absolutely always here. And that puts a burden on them that I think creates a demand that we, we train them for that. And then safety train, safety teams training. This creates a, kind of a committee of knowledgeable people within each building that are kind of looking at safety and security on an ongoing basis, taking input from people, you know, considering different procedures and things like that that you can do. The more, the more minds you have working on this sort of thing, the better. So, and then of course, ongoing lockdown simulations and debriefs, doing, doing lockdown drills and kind of letting people know and sharing knowledge about how those go in a way that we all learn. So that's kind of a highlight of those things that are going on. Questions?
Any idea what the timetable is for the grants that you applied for? I mean, is, when, when are they awarded?
They said from the beginning that it was going to happen rather quickly. The turnaround for last year's was, was pretty quick because they had a deadline. They were already considering them before the deadline. The email that I got back today when I asked that question was kind of like a, don't call us, we'll call you. And I don't think I was the first person today who asked, so there's a lot of schools, a lot of schools writing grants, so.
Is it a, is it a situation where even if you don't get the $100,000 per building you asked for, it's likely that we'll get something out of it or?
I feel like, and I think Dr. Heil feels like there's a good likelihood that we'll get something since we applied.
Good.
Yeah.
The criteria, one criterion was if you didn't apply in the past for this grant, then you're first in line. If you didn't get it last year for some, there's no application for the money last year, so we should be one of the schools that's first in line to get the money. And all the things that we are applying for, and that, you know, Wes did all the work on this grant, but all the things that we're applying for are meet and comply with what they want to spend money on. And so I feel really good about it. I mean, I don't want to say Wes's, you know, job is dependent upon it, but you know, it's a pretty big deal.
I think by saying you don't want to say that, you kind of say. But that's fine.
Yeah, no, I, I really, I strongly feel that we are going to get it.
I agree.
And even if, even if we get it, $300,000 is still going to be a little bit short of paying for everything that we really want to do. Fortunately, we have that safety and security levy that can make up the difference for that.
Thanks.
Thank you, Wes.
Thank you.
And there was, I want to say, there was a tremendous amount of work that went into that because you have to have a lot of detail. And in the past, they required that you have estimates for everything that you are requesting money for. We, we were operating under that assumption because we had done it that way before and then we found out after we did all that, Wes did all that work, that you didn't have to have the estimates this time. But we have it now and even though he didn't have to submit it with the grant, but tons of, of work that went into just getting the grant ready. So thank you, Wes, for doing that.
Item eight, the superintendent's recommendations. Dr. Heil.
Thank you. Right, and just before I make the recommendations, a couple of things I want to say. Continuing to conduct entry plan interviews. I've done 22 to date. I'll probably do another 15 to 20 before we start to, before I start to kind of, you know, analyze everything. Certainly there are, there's a consensus around some things that we need to be doing and we need to be working on and some things that we should be focused on for the future. So some of the things are becoming clear already, but we'll do another, you know, 18 or 20 interviews and then we'll really break all that down and we'll have a pretty clear picture about what the stakeholders think we should be focused on, you know, in the near future. And then I want to say a thank you, a huge thank you to the Vermillion Education Foundation. Really awesome event on Monday night and in one evening, raised $30,000 to fund really important academic projects across the district, K-12. You know, it just, an incredible event, an awesome meal, but even more incredible fundraiser for academic purposes, something I've never experienced before anywhere. And so I just really appreciate all the work and effort that went into that. Heidi Riddle especially, I think, leads that effort and does a lot of the work. So thanks to her and everybody that was involved and everybody that attended.
Thank you.
And then I recommend items one and two for approval, please.
Let's go with item one.
I'll move. I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Johnston.
Yes.
Mr. Habermill.
Abstain.
Mrs. Innis.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Step.
Yes.
Motion approved for zero and one abstention.
Let's go to number two, please.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Johnston.
Yes.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innis.
Abstain.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Step.
Yes.
Motion approved for zero and one abstention.
Quickly before we go to the treasurer's report, I have a question. Do you have an update on the baseball field? How are they doing?
Yeah, so, you know, all the work is done and now it's just a matter of watering and keeping the seed wet until we get grass coming. If you look really closely, you can see the green sheen and so the grass seed has taken, starting to come up, so we're just keeping the water on it as much as needed. It's got to be wet, dry, wet, dry. So our folks are watering it and I think things are good. If water runs downhill, we should be good next year.
Let's hope. Treasurer's recommendations.
Thank you. Number one, recommend a resolution to approve the financial report for September 2022 and that is attachment A.
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, starting off with revenue, looking at the general fund, through the month of September, the district received 9.76 million in general fund revenue compared to 9.79 at this time last year and 9.78 in fiscal year 21. The district is on pace to collect its historical average revenue. I mean, as you can see, just through these first three months and through our first fall tax collection, we're, we're right on line with where we typically are. Moving on to food service revenue through the month of September, we have received $79,000 compared to $32,600 at this time last year and $5,500 in fiscal year 21. The district should expect to see its food service revenue fall back to its historical averages, which is right around $55,000 a month. And this is prior to all meals being reimbursed by the government. So last year, every, every meal that we sold was free and reduced and that, that free and reduced price is higher than we charge for meals here. Moving on to all funds by revenue through the month of September, the district has received 10.25 million compared to 10.39 at this time last year and 10.11 in fiscal year 21. Again, much like the general fund, our all fund revenue is right on pace to collect its historical average. Moving on to expenditures on the general fund side, through the month of September, we've expended 7.28 million from the general fund compared to 6.35 million at this time last year and 6.15 in fiscal year 21. So far this year, the district, the district has spent 729,000 more in salaries than it did the previous year. Part of that increase was moving staff from a bi-weekly to a bi-monthly pay as well as negotiated increases. So when we switched over from 26 pays to 24 pays to pay off the end of their contract, I had one extra payroll in there. One extra payroll is around $600,000 and that's why you're seeing that large increase. And likewise, on our retirement and our insurance benefits, they've increased as well. They've increased by $153,000 this year. And again, it's because we've had increases not only in the salaries for the 14% in retirement that we pay, but also health insurance costs have increased 6%. In total, the district has spent 930,000 more this year than it has in the previous year. I will say though, because through July, August, and September, that was one extra payroll for $600,000, we're not going to continue this pace, but we will continue a pace that'll outpace previous years. Moving on to food service, through the month of September, we've expended $188,000 compared to $167,000 at this time last year and $139,000 in fiscal year 21. Again, it just negotiated salary increases and more importantly than that even, the cost of food is the main driver for our increases here. We will work closely to monitor the health of the food service fund throughout the year and again, every month, I'll keep you guys updated on where we are with that. And then looking at all funds on the expenditure side, through the month of September, we've expended $8 million from all funds compared to 6.8 at this time last year and 6.9 in fiscal year 21. Again, same as the general fund, the district is on pace to spend more than its historical average. And then lastly, we'll look at cash through the month of September. The district had a total of 21.3 million in cash compared to 21.3 million at this time last year and 19.7 in fiscal year 21. Looking at the food service, the district has a total of 269,000 in cash compared to 46,000 at this time last year and 39,000 in fiscal year 21. The reason we see that large cash this year is because last year, again, meals were reimbursed by the federal government at a rate higher than what we charge. We were able to collect more revenue. And then looking at all funds, through this year, the district has a total of 26.6 million in cash from all funds compared to 24.9 at this time last year and 22.6 in fiscal year 21. On the investment side of things, we are seeing a turnaround on our, on our rates. I anticipate that to continue. Through the month of September, we've earned a total of $54,853 on interest compared to $44,306 at this time last year. It's a difference of $10,500 or 23%. Any questions?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Johnston.
Yes.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innis.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Step.
Yes.
Motion approved, five zero. Number two, recommend a resolution to approve the October appropriations and that is attachment B.
I'll move.
I'll second.
So on the appropriations, the very first page on the appropriations, this is just me estimating our revenue. So what it's doing is it's saying all the different funds that we have, it's listing our beginning cash balance on July 1st, and then it's listing any taxes or other sources of revenue that we anticipate to collect this fiscal year to give you a total of all of our cash at the end there. What I then do is we'll take a look at our appropriations on page two. This is what we're, we're asking the board to approve for a budget standpoint. Again, we did the, we did our final appropriations in August, but now we're doing them again in October because I've had to make a couple of budget adjustments, things that weren't in our budget that we've added. So I've had to increase our general fund appropriation a little bit. Mrs. Innis did catch a mistake on line, fund 070, that should say capital projects, not safety and security. And again, the major reason for asking for the increase in appropriations on the general fund is salary and benefits. And the rest of it is just money that we had that, from the federal government that I hadn't appropriated yet because I didn't know what our budget would be. And then when you look at the last page there, that's just a check. That's just saying, on the very first line, our certificate of estimated resources, this is how much revenue we anticipate to bring in this year, again, with our cash balance. The second line is the appropriations, that's how much we anticipate to spend. And the difference between what we have in cash versus what we anticipate to spend is positive. It's just a way to check to make sure that we're not over appropriating money that we don't have.
Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Johnston.
Yes.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innis.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Step.
Yes.
Motion approved. Motion approved five, zero. Number three, recommend a resolution for Zupkin Associates to provide audit services for the periods ended June 30th, 2022 through June 30th, 2025. That's attachment C.
I'll move.
I'll second.
This is just the contract that we set up. We did have the auditor standing here before. Due to the timeliness of their audit completion and the cost, I had requested an IPA, an independent firm, to come back in. Zupkin's that firm and I wanted to lock him up to a three-year contract.
So they just oversee everything?
Yeah, they'll be doing our GAAP audit and our financial audit. They'll also do our Medicaid audit as well.
Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Johnston.
Yes.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Step.
Yes.
Motion approved five, zero. And number four, approve the following donations. It's $1,500 from the Friends of Harbertown, Inc. to the fifth grade Greenfield Village trip, a drum set from Grace United Methodist Church to Saylorway Middle School, $250 from Tiffany's to VHS Esports, and $750 from Vermillion Wrestling Lake Erie Grapplers to esports.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Johnston.
Yes.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Step.
Yes.
Motion approved five, zero. Thank you.
Don't just make comment, the donations are greatly appreciated that come in from the outside sources here in our community, so it supports all our different programs, so I thank them. Number 10, the consent agenda. The superintendent and treasurer recommend that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda items. Action by the Board of Education in adoption of the consent agenda means that all items are adopted by one single motion unless a member of the board, the treasurer, or the superintendent request that any such items be removed from the consent agenda and voted upon separately. Any other concerns? And they are as listed. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Johnston.
Yes.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Step.
Yes.
Motion approved five, zero.
Item 12 is the dates and locations of upcoming board meetings. Meetings will be held in the Vermillion High School Commons, 1250 Sanford Street, unless otherwise noted. We have a regular meeting Monday, November 14th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. Regular meeting Monday, December 12th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. Tax budget Monday, January 9th, 2023 at 5:40 PM. Organizational meeting Monday, January 9th, 2023 at 5:45. And a regular meeting Monday, January 9th, 2023 at 6:00 PM. Item 13 is a public participation. The board reserve, board president reserves a right to limit time. The public participation section of the Board of Education's agenda is specifically designed for the public to address the board with their compliments, concerns, and/or question, questions. The board welcomes your comments. If you wish to address the board regarding a problem, the board would remind you of two things. First, your comments should be factual and respectful to the rights of others. Second, before coming to the board with a specific problem, you should first address the problem with the appropriate teacher, staff member, or administrator. This meeting, meeting of the Board of Education is a, is public and is for the purpose of conducting the school district's business. Do I have anybody that would like to speak tonight? Item 14, recommend, recommend a resolution to move into executive session for the purpose of compensation for a public employee.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Johnston.
Yes.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.